Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is for the council to consider joining MCE Clean Energy and introduce an ordinance to implement a community choice aggregate aggregation program. And Julie Hawswidowicz, our Environmental Resource Coordinator, and Forrest Ebs, our Community Development Director, will be making the presentation on this.
Mayor Wright and council people, council members, before you tonight, you have an opportunity to really, to really reinforce number three on our, on our, on our mission statement there, and adopt a program that will help us reduce greenhouse gas emissions and provide a better mix of renewable energy for our community, as well as give our community a choice in who they want to have buy their power from. I mean, the key part here is we go back and forth between calling it community choice aggregate, which is what it's legislatively called, and what we call it in the public interface, which is community choice energy, so that they know that it's about energy. But the idea is this community choice. Should we, or should you adopt, or decide to join either MCE or East Bay Clean and or Community Energy, or not at all, these, these programs have the opportunity for whichever one we go with, our businesses and residents and the city itself would have the opportunity to stay with PG&E, or to go with the new program. So there is the option, hence the community choice. If you were to go with MCE, they have a 50% renewable energy option, that's their basic one. They also have 100% renewable energy. If, based on going from a 30%, which is what PG&E is currently renewable energy, to 50% with MCE, we're looking at an overall reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions of roughly 4%. From the energy sector, you're looking at a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions of around 22% of our current emissions levels. So it has a good impact on what we're doing for the environment. I have been following this since roughly 2009, and so I'm very excited that we're here with this opportunity. I didn't think that we would, we would be here. So this is very great to see. The county has been, there's been a lot of movement in the county over the last year or two. There's currently five cities in the county that were previously part of MCE before the current push happened, and those are Walnut Creek, El Cerrito, San Pablo, Richmond, and Lafayette. Tonight Concord is deciding whether or not they're going to be joining MCE at their council meeting. The cities of Pittsburgh, Oakley, and Danville and Maraga have all recently voted to join MCE, and the county has also recently voted to join MCE. At that point, and you'll notice in the staff report, you still have the option of both either doing East Bay, which is the Alameda County CCA that's currently starting up, or MCE. Alameda County's representatives have not gotten back to me since their board meeting last week, but were, as of the week before that, they knew that the meeting was tonight, they knew that they had both options here, and they weren't sure they were going to be given direction from their new JPA board to attend. They're, they're trying to figure out what to do with the fact that the county and several other cities have decided not to join them and join forces with them. So that's why there's no representatives here, is because they're not sure where they're going. They might, they're probably just going to stay with, working with Alameda County and getting their program up and running. As you'll notice in the staff report, some of the advantages to going with Marin Clean Energy, or excuse me, formerly, formerly Clean Energy, MCE, is that they do, they have been around since, flipping pages. Lost it. They've been around since 2010, and have a very proven track record, as well as a good credit rating, so that they're able to do the purchasing of, and the financing of new renewable projects. That being said, there is, we have JR Kiligrew here from MCE that will be able to answer any questions on their program in particular. Our options, like I mentioned, are to not do anything and stay with PG&E, to, or to either join MCE or East Bay Community Energy. So with that being said, I can ask, answer any questions.
Councilmember Ogerchuk.
Thank you. I always liked the idea of having choices, but in reading some of this, I have some concerns. And I'll share, I'll try and go through them quickly, because there were quite a few. On the second page, on the second paragraph, the last sentence, it says California law rate payers' option to opt out of CCE and return to the incumbent utility. But, so if we join as a city, residents have to pay to opt out, or the city has to pay to opt out?
So the initial, in the initial period, there's no charge to opt out. It's if they decide to stay with, with MCE by default, and then later down the line, go to opt out, then there's that fee. And then they have to stay with the, with PG, if they go back to PG&E, they have to stay with them for a year before they can switch again.
What would the fee be?
The fee, it's $5, $5 for residents and 25 for commercial accounts.
Where'd you find that, Julie?
That is on the page five. It's in the last paragraph before the attachments.
Oh, I see it now, okay. Wait a minute. Could they opt back in if they opted out at one time?
Yes, they can. They just have to wait 12 months. So they have to stick by their decision for a year. Give you an example of this, with the Big Break Energy Project, as mentioned in the staff report, MCE and JR have reviewed the contract, the power purchase agreement, and the rate structure that we are going to be getting with PG&E for that project, and actually advised us to stay with PG&E for the city's accounts, because the rate structure, they do not have the RESBCT rate structure that we are currently doing the solar project under.
Okay, so I have a few more, I apologize. On page five, which I did read, because I have it highlighted, it says in number two, the Community Development Department is prepared to offer the support and desk. So do we have, we have desk space for this?
We do. We have, we have several empty desks on the second floor.
Okay, but do we have staff that to help support this, though? I mean, we're low...
No, we're not obligated to support them at all, but it's interesting, they're, they're asking for, they want to have a presence at our public counter, and so we do have desks that are, were empty, that were, that we don't need, and we can give them that and access to our free Wi-Fi and...
So it wasn't support personnel-wise, it was just support?
Yeah, support meaning, we'll let them in and give them a desk.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then down below, talks about four enrollment notices to be sent to every electricity customer. Who's going to incur that cost, those four notices?
That's MCE, or East Bay. In this case, it's MCE, because they're the ones that are offering to do it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Tiscorino.
I have a question, but I have to find it again, so hold, give me one second here. And I'm looking at the, you know, the options that we have, whether we join MCE, or, or the other entity, or do nothing at all. So, which are telling me at this particular point that, and I'm still trying to find that page where it has the other option. Okay, EBCE, they're not here because they're, they fill out this particular point that they just want to concentrate in the Alameda area, and they're not really looking at pursuing anywhere here in the Contra Costa area?
I can't speak for them, per se, but I can tell you that, that after the Board of Supervisors voted to go with MCE, they seemed uninterested to come to this meeting, and I have not heard back from them. They were aware that I was bringing it to council. The email that I received from the Alameda County Planning Staff was that they needed direction from their board on what they, whether they were going to still try and get folks from Contra Costa County, and I haven't heard from them since.
Okay, and you stated that the city of Concord right now is looking at the same, this evening?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the city of Brentwood is, is waiting to see what's going on at this particular point? Do you know why?
You know, I don't know why, and I think it's really interesting, because we, you and, council had before you a presentation from the county on February 14th of this year, on the feasibility study. The city of Antioch participated as a non-funding partner in that, in that we, you know, gave them access to all of our, our energy data and stuff like that, so that they could work us into the feasibility study, but we did not fund it. Brentwood funded it, their portion, and I believe they might be the only ones that funded it that haven't moved forward, but JR will know more about what's happening in the rest of Contra Costa County in regards to that.
And I do have a couple of questions for JR, if you don't mind.
Come on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is JR Kiligrew. I'm a Community Development Manager with MCE.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Not a problem. My question is, if we eventually do join up with you, you have, you're just a, a service, I guess, you're not going to, you're not going to be part of installations or anything like that with, because you talked about different, installing solar panels and things like that, you're not going to be part of that, right?
Yeah. The constructs and the dynamics of a community choice energy agency, we're a joint powers authority, we're a not-for-profit agency. We act as the default electric service provider. So we're basically a conduit between big solar, wind, biogas, geothermal, hydro producers. We purchase, enter into contracts with them, and then PG&E still is the infrastructure. They own the transmission, the grid, they bring that onto the system through the Cal, through Cal ISO. Where we come in, and we, we've kind of separated ourselves and become the benchmark for energy development in our service area, is through our net energy, a net energy metering program, but then also our feed and tariff program, where we provide above-market rates for solar, wind, biogas, small-scale hydro developers that come, and because of our large reserves, our track record, and the fact that we're providing them a way above-market rate cost, they can then develop those projects and actually return and get a lot of huge revenue from it. And I think what we're seeing right now is a lot of folks who have storage centers, who want to put solar on, but they don't have the same program with PG&E. They're just waiting for a program like us to come online to provide that above-market rate, to then be able to use their rooftop as an economic engine, as opposed to just an engine that just takes in sun all the time and doesn't do anything. So there are a lot of great benefits from an economic standpoint that we're hoping to unlock in Contra Costa County. Right now, our feed and tariff program, as I mentioned, I think we're in phase three. So based on the different types of energy sources, we give you a contracted amount for over 20 years. So say for a, a solar provider that installs 1 megawatt. 1 megawatt of solar, you need about 5 acres of rooftop. That's kind of the nice thing to kind of noodle on when you think about developing solar. So we provide, I think it's about $110 a megawatt, I think PG&E is around $60 or $70. So within that case, you're seeing a net revenue increase of almost 100% just from us. So we really feel like this is the opportunity for Contra Costa County to really take advantage of this amazing amount of, of land that can be utilized for local energy, increasing resilience, but also bringing in good local jobs. I mean, that's what we're all about right now, and the opportunity to bring good local jobs to Contra Costa County is huge. When I was looking through the MRW study, again, I'm quoting their analysis, we, we're actually looking at developing analysis too, they said that 462 megawatts of solar potential are just in Antioch. And if you think about it, you can probably get about 20, 30 jobs out of every, out of every megawatt. So again, the potential of developing, all of that is a huge undertaking. I mean, it's not something we can just do overnight, but the idea of potentially, just through solar, of having somewhere between 11,000 to 13,000 jobs, I think is a pretty, pretty enticing and hopeful opportunity, that despite, you know, what's going on in the world right now, you can have good, clean jobs here in Antioch. And then if you think about all the other communities that are coming online and joining MCE, or other community choice aggregator, the opportunities there, and that's what we're really excited about. Julie mentioned greenhouse gas reductions, we're all about that, but we want to make sure that people have good jobs, they have stable competitive electricity rates, and they can have a good place to call home, where there's, where there's a great environment to be in. So that's what we're really about. We're a, we're a family of communities, so right now we have 24, and we're moving towards about 30 right now, so...
Okay, and you're touching on something I think is very passionate to all of us, is, you know, good jobs within the local area. So with that said, are you, do you refer solar contractors, solar companies to, to do certain jobs? Are you, are you like a referral base too, or?
No, as a, as a public agency and not for profit, like, think of us like a school district or a water district. We can't refer because of, you know, legal issues. So we want to make sure that, you know, we work with the solar industry, we want to make sure there's a good line of communication, but we can't say, oh, work with, you know, ABC Solar, because that, you know, it's an illegal practice for us. We have to, we want to make sure that everyone knows about all solar contractors or opportunities, as opposed to one in particular.
Okay, and I got that gist when I was talking to the city manager, I kind of knew that answer, but I'm just trying to determine how we, or you are determining the amount of, of jobs out here, and when a contractor or a company that provides employment brings in the jobs. So I'm trying to figure out your relation, if there's any relation, and I kind of knew that you don't in some respect, that you can't refer, but I'm just trying to figure out in my mind, how, how do you get those numbers of jobs, of job opportunities, when you're just more of a, you know, service entity?
Yeah. So the one example, we can give you, I can give you two examples. So the FreeThee industrial site in Richmond, Richmond joined in 2013, and because they have a lot of brownfield industrial sites, that's relatively inexpensive, that seemed to be one of the most kind of cost-effective areas to invest in. So the FreeThee is, I think, 2 megawatts, so it's about a 10-acre site, and we've worked with Richmond Build, which takes incarcerated, well, formerly incarcerated adults, and gets them back in the workforce through this really great workforce development project. And the way we see the job numbers is based on, you know, just the on-the-ground installations, the electricians, the laborers, the union hours, so kind of the mixture of that, and I believe we had about 20 to 25 jobs on those particular sites. And then for the Rich, sorry, the Richmond Solar One project, which is going to be the largest public, publicly-owned solar project in the Bay Area, I think there's over 300 jobs that are associated with that, and it's 50% local hire, and I believe 60% of the man-hours will also be union.
No, I appreciate that information. I'm just trying to figure out how you correlate both, what you do...
Yeah.
And what these companies are doing, who, who are the ones actually, you know, bringing the folks to do the work. And yes, and you did mention that, you know, there are good jobs out there, and we want to make sure that, you know, there's a skill level out there that performs these jobs, an educational level, and I think you kind of touched on all of that, so I appreciate that.
Of course, thank you very much.
The councilmember, Wilson.
My questions aren't for you, my questions are more for Julie. So my concern is, I know you'd said you reached out to EBCE, but they never really gave you a response back, or told you why they couldn't come, and so my, my concern is, and thank you for your presentation, is, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to hear from them. We should also have, give PG&E an opportunity to come speak to us. So I'm just really concerned that I'm only hearing, there's, there's multiple parties, and we're only hearing from the one, and, you know, did we, you know, did we do outreach to PG&E as well, to come and, and, you know, answer some of the questions that are being brought up from MCE?
We, we did not outreach directly to PG&E. PG&E's been relatively silent through this whole effort throughout the county. And like I said, East Bay CE did know that we were on, that they were on the agenda today, and did have the opportunity to come, and I made sure that they knew that I was writing the staff report with the option, so...
Yeah. Kind of, I'm kind of struggling, because I want, I want to be able to, to hear from all the choices to make and educated decision.
I understand that, but I can't force them to come if they're not interested in moving forward with it. I tried to keep the option open.
So, so comment, comments on that? I've talked to Tom Guarino and asked him about this very question. PG&E is not allowed to really take a stand on this, and so that's where their stance is. They, they will still be the conveyor of energy, but they're not allowed to take a stance on this, so they wouldn't come here and take a stance. That's number one. Number two, the East Bay, the East Bay one, as I've talked to the other cities and county representatives who've chosen MCE, one of the reasons they've chosen MCE is because their fear with East Bay is that Alameda County will have such a large portion of their board, that decisions will be made for the rest of those on the board by Alameda County representatives, and not so much by Contra Costa County. Contra Costa County cities and county have now joined MCE in such a force that the Contra Costa County will make up a, a large percentage of the MCE board, so Contra Costa County will have a lot of influence over the decisions as it goes forward. Whereas if we were to join East Bay, especially seeing most of the other Contra Costa cities join MCE, we're going to end up on a, we would end up in a, in an organization that was mostly controlled by Alameda County cities, and not have a lot of voice. That's where a lot of these cities are. Brentwood has chosen not to go forward at this point for two reasons. Number one, and many of the, many of the cities that are hesitating, don't like the forced entry aspect of this, that, that when you're signed up, every single resident of your, of your town is automatically defaulted into it, and they have to actually default, they have to actually do some work to get out of it. Brentwood's not happy about that, and there's been no real cost benefit proven, so from the standpoint of opting people in, it may actually be a cost disadvantage to, now, there's going to be an environmental benefit to it, but from a cost-saving standpoint, so that's where Brentwood's at right now, is they're taking the wait-and-see approach, because of the forced entry aspect and the no-cost-benefit aspect of it. Questions that I have are, how much time do they have to opt out? I know there's going to be four, four, you know, email or mail sent directly to each household, but how much time will they have to opt out?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wright. It's a really important question, and I think what we strive for is transparency, is, we want to make sure that everybody knows about this, and we have one of, we have arguably the most robust community outreach strategy out of all the CCEs in California. If you to look at Peninsula, or Silicon Valley, or even San Francisco, it's pretty quiet. They have a light staff, they pretty much just enroll and that's it. But we've made a decision to send out five notices. That's, it doesn't stop there. We, from the moment a community joins MCE and becomes a member, and we elect a board, you appoint a board member to join our board, we start working with the council, city staff, community, community groups. We want to understand your community, so that we can make sure we can get out there and touch base with everybody. And that's pretty much starts even before the noticing, or even before the enrollment starts. So if we just take a fictitious date of May 1st, 2018, if the council decides to join MCE, we pretty much start working now, in terms of getting to know the community, getting to know who needs to be engaged about this. We develop a very robust community outreach plan, and what we start is, three months before the enrollment date, we start with meetings, getting it out to the community, and we work that in concert with our notices. So we send three notices before the, the enrollment date, and then two more subsequent notices. So theoretically, folks have at least five months to make a decision. It's not like it automatically just shows up on May 1st, and they have, they have no idea what's going on. We work as hard as we can to make sure that people can make the right decision, and it's a funny thing, as I've, I've talked to Julie about this, we're in the business of helping you opt out, or opt up, or just stay with us, whatever, we, we want you to make a decision, because with a decision means you're informed. So we, we love opt-outs just as much as we love people participating in this, because at least they know what's going on. And that's why honestly, we have the highest opt-out rates in all of the CCAs in, in California, and that's because we spend so much time talking to people, and if folks don't like the automatic enrollment, which, just to kind of touch upon, you know, the reasonings behind that, so the legislation was drafted because in order to compete with investor-owned utilities, there is no way for it to be an opt-in program, because the amount of outreach and staff it would take to knock on every door and let everybody know, like, hey, this is happening. And the, and, and so that was one of the pieces of the puzzle. The second piece was the fact that it is an opt-out process, and with ample noticing and ample outreach, hopefully within at least five months, folks will have some, some level of touch in terms of an event, a social media campaign, a billboard, or something for them to help understand what's going on, and then they can make a decision. So I feel, we feel like it's important that we take it even a step further in terms of our outreach and our five noticing, to make sure that's possible. In terms of the cost savings, our rates have been 70%, or 70% of the time, we've been cheaper than PG&E. There have been a few times where we've been a little more expensive. I know the city of Richmond, their municipal accounts have saved, I think about $50,000 or $60,000 cumulatively since they joined us in 2013. So even with the kind of ebb and flow of the costs, they've been able to see some savings, as well as the community as a whole, I think, has been able to save over $1 million collectively since 2013. So folks have, and our whole goal is to be cost-competitive. We're not in the business of raising rates so that people lose money. We want people to have, you know, stable rates, hopefully be able to save some money, and help catalyze local economic developments, all kind of wrapped into one nice present, as we call it.
When you're talking about creating jobs, is that, is that putting solar on rooftops, or is that using our industrial land?
Yeah, so that would be a mixture of both. So industrially, utilizing industrial land, but then also looking at the potential of rooftop solar, whether it be on commercial sites, residential sites, you name it, we're kind of looking at an all-hands-on-deck in terms of getting as much on, on the rooftops or within areas, so that folks could have that opportunity to...
Because industrial land creates jobs early on, but then once they're produced, there are no jobs. They sit there and, and create energy, but there are no jobs. We're looking for long-term job creation, and, and so we need to be careful about using our industrial land for short-term gains...
Sure.
That then don't create the long-term jobs that we need. As far as the, if we, right now, we are, as a city, going into partnerships with companies like NRG to create power. What does this contract do to our ability as a city to be able to do that kind of endeavor, private-public partnership?
Yeah, so that's the great thing about choice, is you get to make the best decision for your community or your city. Like, in the case of the RESBCT, I, I took a look at it, and, you know, CCAs don't have a similar rate tariff. It's a very unique rate tariff for municipal governments, and we don't want to disrupt the amount of time and energy you folks have put into it, because it is, it's a solid program for you, it's going to be able to generate a lot of energy and offset, and be able, hopefully, to reduce the emissions that come from municipal operations. So depending upon, what we would love to look at is if you don't opt out all of the accounts with us, or with any CCE, is that you would look at solar for other sites where you could benefit from our net energy metering program, would you actually pay one cent per kilowatt more than retail? And the quickest way to condense this is if you're, you're a surplus generator, let's say you, you consume a million kilowatt-hours, but you produce 1.5 million kilowatt-hours. Our, our net energy metering program pays 125% more than PG&Es. So think about all that stranded money that's not being utilized by the community. In 2015, we paid out over $1 million to our customers, and just in Contra Costa County, it was a quarter million dollars. For 2016, we're looking at upping that to 1.25 million dollars. And the really wonderful thing, as I was looking through the California Solar Statistics website, they kind of look at all the solar in residential and commercial applications, and in Antioch, you folks have 2,100 net energy metering customers that are producing over 1,800 megawatts. I'm just hoping that, you know, a program like us could help catalyze even more economic revenue from these solar systems that you're otherwise not getting from the PG&E program.
This is a public hearing, are there any other public comments?
What a question.
Do you want to save them for after the public speaker, or before? Either way.
Let's go right ahead, Harry.
And, but, we love Harry, by the way.
Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I've been here many times before, talking about this issue, and I think it's really important for what's been said about MCE, I think it's an opportunity. But what I wanted to say most of all is, you know, Mother Nature says, pay me now or pay me later. Pay me now is simply dollars and, and desire to change. Pay me later is the cost of lives, both human and non-human in this process. And I think a program of CCE is a pay-me-now option, where we can reduce greenhouse gases, the city can meet its climate action plan, we can reduce cost, electrical cost, and we can increase local jobs. And along with local jobs is not only the jobs, but the training that goes along with that work, because they can go someplace else and do other electrical work. So I think that's really important for the city. And I believe MCE will be able to satisfy Antioch's needs in this area. And as was mentioned, all around Antioch, other cities are joined MCE. And, and it's like, it makes sense to, to be with everybody else on this program, especially the unincorporated area, almost wraps around the southern part of our, of our city. So with that in mind, I believe MCE is a good option, and a good choice for the city. So with that in mind, I believe MCE is a good option and a good choice for the city. And I'm so glad to be finally at this point where you guys are going to make a decision. This is good, but thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Having no other public comments, the public hearing portion of this is now closed. This item is now before council. Turn it over to Councilmember Thorpe for his questions.
Oh, yeah. Forgot. And so, as you talked about PG&E's 33 renewables, but it was brought to my attention that 33, excuse me, that PG&E has a 70% energy portfolio that's gas-free. So doesn't that help us meet our needs in terms of reducing our carbon footprint? I know it's nuclear, hydro, and renewable.
Yeah, their energy matrix is still considered to be 30% renewable. So I'm not sure how the 70% gas-free works into that, but they're considered, but they're considered to be 30% renewable energy that was what's put on.
Right, there's the renewable hydro, and then the nuclear.
Yeah, so...
That's 70% together, so 33% is renewable.
Yeah.
So overall, what we're looking at, and what you're asking us to consider, is this question about the environment and, and our carbon gas emissions.
Uh huh.
So, I'm just, I'm...
I'm going to find my sheet. So basically, the, the greenhouse gas reduction projections that I gave you with basically lowering our greenhouse gas emissions for, for energy-related stuff by 22%, and overall for the community of 4%, is based on their actual emissions in, uh, matrix. So whether, with, with that 30% renewable and with the nuclear, it's still based on the emissions for their matrix through the state. So those, that reduction in greenhouse gas emissions is based on existing PG&E versus existing MCE matrix.
Doesn't MCE use hydro as well?
So when you're talking about the power content label, or the power mix of an individual energy, energy, whether if it's an IOU or a default, or an electric service provider, there are three buckets. What is called RPS-eligible, Renewable Portfolio Standard-eligible, that's wind, solar, biogas, geothermal, and small-scale hydro, plants that are 30 megawatts or less. Then the next part would be greenhouse gas-free, which are large-scale hydro plants as well as nuclear. And then finally, you have conventional fuels, which are like natural gas, and then system power, which is, who knows where it comes from. You are correct, PG&E recently released a, had a press release, I think they're at 32.8% renewable, and that they're 69.3% greenhouse gas-free. Very big hydro year with all the rain, so they were able to ramp that up. The interesting thing about, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak to that, because I'm not a PG&E rep. But we're at, in 2016, I think we are, we are 56% renewable and 70% greenhouse gas-free. So that remainder for us does not include nuclear, it's large-scale hydro. And we actually recently just adopted a new goal of being 100% greenhouse gas-free by 2025. The utilities are going to try to get there by 2045. So we're going to be there 20 years ahead of the road. Like, we, when we first came online, we were 50% renewable, we did that 20 years ahead of the goal of the state of being 50% renewable by 2030. So right now, the IOUs are...
At what type of scale relative to the, to the, to the utility companies?
In terms of our load?
Right. So you're much smaller than the utility companies, right? So you can achieve those goals, and so for the, to ask the utility to come up, so making that comparison, 2025 to 2045, it is a little unfair.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Uh, my next question is around investments in the community. And so, you know, I keep hearing about jobs, and really what we're talking about is, is these, what is the right term? I don't want to call it trickle-down, but... No, you're not creating the jobs directly, you're just assuming that there's going to be an increase in job creation as a result of, of you coming here, right?
Yeah, I think what we don't want to say, what we view ourselves as a facilitator. We provide platforms, avenues, programs that will provide jobs. Because we're, we're not here like showing up, hiring everybody, but if we provide products and programs that can leverage existing programs in the community to hire up people, that's our goal. Like, we're not in the business of coming into different communities and doing this, that. We want to make sure we can provide cost-effective, economically beneficial programs that can catalyze those jobs in the community that otherwise would not be there without these type of programs. Because we're thinking about, would the Solar One project in Richmond be built without us? I don't know, I can't, I'm not going to say absolutely not. Would the FreeThee one? You know, would the other programs or opportunities that potentially are in Contra Costa County not ever come to fruition without a community choice aggregation program? I, I can't make that claim, I'm not going to, but hopefully with these aggressive programs and, and products, that will help catalyze this type of development. Because otherwise, there's not the incentive here to be done. And what we want to do is incentivize and catalyze local renewable energy development. And the interesting thing about it is, there's a little bit of a misconception in terms of time and how much, like, it can't just turn on automatically. Like, to develop a site, you need to make sure the site's either remediated or not. Then you've got to get permits, and then you've got to do engineering and scaling, then you've got to figure out what kind of like hiring requirement do you want? Do you want it to use local labor, union labor, just use the cheapest labor possible? And then you've got to go through the whole process of contracting with the vendors to get the, the inverters, the solar panels, the trackers, everything you want to do with it. And then finally, you get to installation, and then you need PG&E to interconnect the things, the, the solar array. So it takes time and energy, and there have been a lot of folks who've been, I guess, troubled with how fast we've been able to develop local renewable projects. But that'd be, that's because we were the first one to the deck, but because we've had this time and energy to figure out what it really takes, we, we make the best products possible. And we really focus on, you know, union jobs, local jobs, make sure that the community benefits from it. And granted, yes, they're not super-long-term jobs, but as Harry mentioned, they give you an opportunity, a platform to get the next job, because the solar industry is just keeping moving forward. I mean, there's going to be more plants built, more jobs, and while it may be kind of a journeyman-type trade, but I feel like it's a really wonderful trade to have, and it's going to be a trade that I don't see ever going away unless the sun just decides to not show up one day.
Well, I appreciate that. And the word I was looking for is the multiplier effect, yeah, which is, which is the concept that, that is at the core of what you're, what you're proposing.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. And I, I do appreciate that in the long term, there will be some jobs, because there's the maintenance and, you know, so I, so there's some of that. But here in Antioch, well, some of those types of investments are, would they ever equate, like, as an example, you know, PG&E has like a billion-dollar investment here in Antioch?
Through infrastructure.
Right, through their Gateway Energy Plant. And then they have the yard over on Hillcrest. We would, would, would what you're talking about here ever equate to that?
You know, and I can't, I can't speak of the, yeah, the, the scale of that.
Yeah, the scale of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a little tough for an apples-to-apples comparison, but what we, what we hope is with establishing, you know, attractive feed-in tariff programs, and we're actually going to expand that out to, from like five to 10 megawatts to maybe 20 megawatts plus, to be able to develop the land that would be here in Antioch, to provide those type of, I don't, I don't know if we ever could get to that scale just here in Antioch, just because I'm not sure the amount of money that would be needed for that. But I know that in the state of California, again, it's a little different, we've invested $1.6 billion in renewables between wind, solar, and biogas, and that's the largest that any CCE's seen in California thus far. So we're, we're definitely familiar with investing in the scale. One interesting note is about, we have a, we have a phone call with the county's sustainability coordinator on Thursday, because they just got a Strategic Growth Council grant to investigate local renewables within unincorporated county as well as the county's facilities. The reason why is because we're the folks that are going to be coming to the table with the most attractive renewable energy products in terms of our feed-in tariff and our, our power purchase agreements. So with that said, we want to make sure that we understand the, the landscape here in Antioch and understand the benefits of that. And that's part and parcel of what we would do in terms of moving forward, is really understand what's going on here, and be able to kind of give you an idea of what the potential would be, like conservative, or very aggressive, or kind of shoot-for-the-moon type stuff. So I feel like that's what we, we're excited to get involved with in terms of showing you what the potential would be, and then executing on that.
Thank you. Do you have relationships with, like, the League of Conservation Voters, Sierra Club?
Yes, yes. We, the Sierra Club's been a big advocate of, of their 100% renewable campaign. They've stayed a little agnostic in terms of saying like who to go with, but they're all for communities moving towards community choice, as well as moving towards 100% renewable energy.
So they haven't given you a stamp of, of approval?
Yeah, nor EBC or any other committee choice in California, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Overtak.
There's, I'm going back and thinking about the things that you're, you're talking about, and I have concerns again about notifying individuals, constituents, homeowners, and them having the opportunity to opt out. I don't think sometimes that they fully understand. They come in and say a water bill, and they don't understand, and they're getting three notices that their water's going to be cut off, and they don't know until they actually get their water cut off. So they're not really paying attention, because life gets in the way, so they don't really get the full effect of this. And then I'm reading, you know, so it goes back to the liability issue. If we opt in as a city and then we no longer want to participate, we've joined the JP, JPA, there is some liability that happens if we choose to opt out from what this is saying, correct?
Well, I, I want to carefully tread and delineate between opting out and departing the Joint Powers Authority. So the City of Antioch, as a municipal, as a customer, has a numerous, like, I don't know how many individual electricity accounts you have, you have the right to do whatever you feel is best for your city with each one of those individual accounts, just like any residence, or any business, or any commercial entity. So in terms of the noticing, you know, you would get three notices upfront, the enrollment would start, and you'd get two more notices, and so theoretically, you'd have five months to make that decision. Now, in terms of when you make a commitment and you decide to join any, whether it be EBC or, or MCE, that's a commitment. We want you folks to feel totally informed, totally empowered by this decision. We want folks to be excited about this. This isn't a decision that is one you want to tread lightly on, you want to make an informed decision, because, you know, we've never entered into a conversation with any of our cities or communities that has inkled that, like, we would like to depart. So the, the way in which the structure's been set up for the Joint Powers Authority is it, it, the cost would be pretty exorbitant if you, if you decided to join, and then two or three, two or three years later, you wanted to leave. And the way that's structured is based on your load and the procurement strategies that we have in terms of making sure that electricity can come to your community, and that would be tied to that. And it, it's just financially prohibitive. But I, I want to impress you the importance of making the right decision, is that this is a commitment, it's not something that you want to backpedal on, because it would, it would be a little too tough financially. And I think honestly, we want to make sure that folks who join any community choice company, energy agency are excited about it, and have done their due diligence and feel empowered by it, as opposed to joining and then treading lightly, like, oh, I'm not sure what's going to happen. I mean, our track record's here, we started in Marin, we, Richmond was the first city to join us outside of Marin, then we moved to, you know, San Pablo, El Cerrito, then all of Napa, as well as La Fian, Walnut Creek. And as been, as it's been mentioned, Maraga, Oakley, Pinola, Contra Costa County, and Pittsburgh have all voided to join. And then tonight is you folks, as well as Concord, as well as, and Martinez, actually. Their Public Infrastructure Subcommittee recommended to join MCE, and a similar event will be happening on June 7th in Martinez. So what we're really excited about is hopefully a unified northern waterfront, because we know the, the Northern Waterfront Economic Development Initiative is a huge, really important undertaking, and we want to be involved with that, because we know the jobs that are coming to that, we know the opportunity that's coming to that, and we feel that renewable clean energy is, could be a very important piece of that puzzle. So we want to make sure that if you folks do join, we want to be integrated in this, this beautiful landscape of the northern waterfront, which hopefully includes Antioch.
Cost comparison, as, as it goes forward, will there be an easy way for ratepayers to be able to, as they get their bills? No. You know, as things go forward, the cost comparison between what they would be paying with PG&E and what they're paying with the MCE?
Yeah, great question. So in terms of a more, a forward, forward thinking, like, interactive tool, we don't have that yet, but on our website, we have a cost calculator, which is paired with PG&E's rates. So at any time, I mean, you have to be proficient and excel to the extent of, you know, your, your utility tariff, you know how much kilowatt-hours you consumed in a month, you just input that data, and then it actually compares all six choices you theoretically have, because we have a 50% renewable, 100% renewable option, but we also have 100% local solar option from our service area. And actually, PG&E has three options, they have their default, 33% now, a 50% renewable, and then 100% renewable option as well. So just think about it, in the past seven years, it went from one choice to now six choices. It's pretty amazing what's happened in terms of kind of the CCA movement being able to move the IOUs to provide that choice as well, and to, to diversify their products for their customers. But that's the only mechanism we have. And we do cost comparisons for small commercial businesses all the way up to very large industrial businesses, because we want to make them understand what their choice is too. Because a lot of people may not know how to kind of navigate their PG&E bill in terms of like understanding all the nuances of it. So we're, we're here to help facilitate that. And, you know, I've done plenty of cost comparisons where, for some reason, the rate and the schedule and their time of use just favored PG&E, and we said, you know what, you know, that's probably the best choice for you. But I've also done other ones where we were more favorable, and it just was like a glaring $5,000, $10,000 a year savings. So it can kind of be a push and pull. We like to say we're cost competitive with PG&E, usually within 1%, either above or below, across all different rate, rate classes. So it varies a little bit, but as I mentioned, you know, we're in the business of providing stable competitive rates, so that ratepayers don't get hit in their pocketbooks. In your packets I, I gave you tonight, there's a, Understanding Your Bill, bifold, or trifold, I believe, which kind of walks you through what the bill would look like. I hope I'm not keeping you up. Sorry. Where, there, all that happens is a, an MCE generation charge that, what happens is you separate, the previous bill would just have PG&E, PG&E charges, which is transmission, distribution, and generation. Now it's just bisected, or dissected into two. It's not an additional cost, it's just a, it's that proportion of the bill. And the generation usually ends up being about 35, 40% of the bill, whereas the rest is transmission, distribution, plus fees.
So our options tonight, did you have a question?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I just had a quick, quick, so, because you had commented on the options that now exist. So I can pick up the phone, call PG&E and say, listen, I want all my energy to come from renewable energy. I have that option right now.
Correct, yeah. You can do it online, because I, I live in Oakland, so I will be an EBC customer probably by next year. If we stay in Oakland, we're getting forced out of our house, but anyway, that's another story. Uh, yeah, you can pick up the phone or go online. We've done some cost comparisons, their 50% renewable option is more expensive than ours, and their 100% renewable is 60%, it's, it's premium, 60% more than ours. And then for commercial customers, I think it's 130 or 40% more. So it's significantly different, like, if, if the, a, a business wants to go 100% deep green with us, that's our 100% California bundled wind and solar product, and that costs them one, one penny per kilowatt more. So if they're consuming 1,000 kilowatt-hours, which is very low, it would be $10 a year. But with PG&E, for that similar customer, it'd be like $23 to $25. And there's no, no difference in the product in terms of, they're just 100% solar, we're wind and solar, 100% California electricity, or energy.
So, but in the context of choice, people already have that choice?
Yes.
Is there a time crunch to our decision? It sounds, seems like we're, we're trying to get through two readings by the end of June or something, is that...
Yeah, correct. In terms of the process, the, the steps to take are, you know, reading and passing the ordinance twice, passing the memorandum of, of understanding, adopting the resolution... passing the memorandum of understanding, adopting the resolution, and then the load data that we get from PG&E to do the analysis. So those are the primary steps that you have to move forward with. Yes, we do have a deadline of June 30th of next month for that decision to be made. There's still ample time. We work very, very, I don't want to say quickly, but we know how to do this. We've enrolled, you know, a lot of different communities of a lot of different sizes. This enrollment's going to be very interesting. We're trying to figure out the type of enrollment we're going to do next year, whether it's going to be all in one fell swoop, or whether we're going to do phases. But we're really hoping to make sure that all customers get enrolled in 2018, whether it's in two phases or one phase. That, it all depends on the market for supply right now in terms of whether we can make sure our costs can be competitive and nothing gets shifted around. But to get to your question, yes. The next step, if you pass the ordinance tonight, would be to move with the three steps at the next meeting, the adoption of resolution, the MOU, and the second reading of the ordinance.
So our options tonight, thank you, are to choose one of these as a first reading, bring it back. Number two, to do nothing. And three would be to table if people need more time to make a decision. If we were to table until the June meeting, there's still two council meetings in June to be able to get this through. Is that correct, or is that not?
Not sure how that works with the public hearing of the, of, I think we can delay it. But yeah, we do have two meetings that we could still get through in June. If you decide not to do, to opt or to join any CCE program at this time, you would be able to do it again by next May? What's the normal deadline?
Yeah. Excuse me. In terms of inclusion, we put a call out to communities that are in our existing service area. So within the county, so we work with all the communities in Marin, all the communities in Napa, the city of Benicia and Solano County, and then I think it's going to be, it's right now 11 communities in Contra Costa County. If any community in Contra Costa County, like Arinda, Brentwood, Pleasant Hill, San Ramon, Clayton, those are the folks, and Hercules, those are the folks that are kind of doing the wait-and-see. We would have to go through this enrollment and then determine whether or not we could do another subsequent enrollment. So I can't guarantee it would be next year because we're going to be enrolling, doing the largest enrollment we've ever had. We're going to be a lot of contracting, a lot of exciting community outreach, too. So I think that would be based on the board and how they feel about this current enrollment to make a decision whether we'd open up inclusion again for the remainder of the Contra Costa County community. So that would be, I think, a wait-and-see.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Question. Community engagement, what type of engagement have you done in terms of getting feedback from the community about this?
I've been trying to talk about it with folks when I'm out in the community in general. We posted this on Nextdoor. The city's environmental resources and agency on Nextdoor, so it goes out to over 10,000 Nextdoor subscribers within the community. You got it. We posted it out there. We also posted it in February on that as well. That wasn't a public hearing, so there wasn't a trigger to put it out in the newspaper when we had the public, when we had the workshop on the feasibility study. But we put it out on Nextdoor, and we also put it out on our Facebook page to try and push it out so that people are aware of it and encourage people to come and provide their feedback.
So outside of that, so we put out information saying we may have this public hearing, or we have this public hearing. This is an option, not necessarily. We haven't done anything that specifically engages the community in this process of deciding a new energy provider?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Honestly, that would have taken a lot longer than when I was given word to move forward on it.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, sometimes, this is the one where I have concerns about is that sometimes we make big decisions like this and we haven't really engaged the community. And then from some of the questions that Councilmember Ogerchak was asking, you know, once we decide to do this, or if we decide to do this, we're locked in. And so that, this is, you know, this isn't a sidewalk or building and, you know, a house. This is people's energy, supplying energy to 37,000 households and businesses. So I think we can do a little better on that end.
Councilmember Tiscorino.
First of all, I like the concept, and I appreciate the work that you're doing because I know you're very passionate, and you and I have had conversations on that respect, you know, a few years back. So the concept of choice is a good thing. But there is one red flag, and we did, and I'm glad that Councilmember Ogerchak brought it up because we did discuss this this morning too as well. You know, I'm still nervous about, you know, the cost effectiveness. If we felt like it didn't work out, and we are part of the joint power authority, and how much it's going to cost us. Is there any way that, before we can really move on to this, to get some kind of data of how this will affect us? You know, as far as the joint powers authority? And, you know, the costs that would, how significant the cost would be if we decided to opt out? Because this is a real commitment, and I know it's going to be costly to do so. So I don't know if there's any information out there for us to get a better understanding, to make me feel better on the decision I'm going to make, whether it's tonight or the next council meeting. But, you know, if we can get something to that effect, I would truly appreciate it. I don't know if we can or not, so.
If I can just say a little bit about that in general. A lot of it is because it's unknown. If we join a CCE, that CCE will have to go out and make purchasing agreements for all of the power that, to supply our community. So then it becomes an issue if we completely remove ourselves from the JPA. What, they're now on the hook, they have to get some cost recovery for all of the power that they purchased on our behalf, all the contracts that are in place on our behalf. That's why it's more feasible for us if we decide that it's not working, which has not happened to date, that if it's not working for us, that we want to just completely take ourselves out and encourage our community members to, our community customers to opt out as well and do the transfer back to PG&E and pay the one-time fee to transfer back. That's the most cost-effective way.
Mr. Mayor, if may, I had a couple of comments, just to kind of give a, maybe a different perspective on this program. I would look at this program, it's not a jobs program. It's not an economic development program, I'm very clear about that. There will be some jobs, but I certainly wouldn't lead as this is a jobs bill. It does many other things. It's also not just a feel-good bill. It's not something that we do because we think it makes us feel good and that's its value. It certainly does that, but that's not the basis of this. In 2006, Governor Schwarzenegger sent into motion a few bills, and ultimately, the Assembly and the Senate got behind it. And today, we have some of the strongest climate change legislation in the world, in California. And specifically, the goal was, the notion that the state wanted to pursue was by 2020, we would have pulled back our greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels, approximately a 15% reduction from the business-as-usual model. And through one way or another, it is pushed down to the city. But like all things, implementation, it comes all the way down, and we are the boots on the ground here. And we have commitments through our Community Climate Action Plan to achieve a comparable result, a comparable outcome. This is a pretty easy way to get there, to get a big chunk of that done. Most of the programs that are in there don't even come close to breaking even. It's a heavily subsidized, the return you'll get versus what you have to put into it, the sacrifice you'll make. This is a good program in the sense that it's as close to cost-neutral as we're going to get. It's going to be potentially different, awkward, weird. All of a sudden, you're not getting a PG&E bill, or you're getting, you'll probably still continue to get it for your gas, actually, but you'll get a new, yeah. But you're going to have, you're going to have different names and all that, there's going to be that confusion. But from the city, the city as an agency I'm speaking of, the city as an agency's perspective, this is a, this is low-hanging fruit in terms of achieving those goals that we're going to have to achieve another way. The other ways of trying to achieve those greenhouse gas emissions are much more difficult, much more expensive. They can bleed into land use restrictions, they can bleed into taking a look at our commuter culture and making some really hard, hard choices in terms of development, growth, and so forth. So I'm not trying to sway you one way or another, but I want to give you the big picture on why are we doing any of this? And in my opinion, as the director of this department, that's really the root of this. And I'm glad that we have other side benefits from it, but at the end of the day, we have a commitment to make, to meet. Thank you.
Councilmember Ogerchak.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ebs, but I feel that, you know, we're being rushed right now. And it's kind of like, either we do it now or we can't do it next year. From what Julie had said, there was a possibility we could do it by May, and you're saying no, that we can't. It might be done deal before then. There's just too many questions. I mean, the liability is an issue to me. It just, it is. It is what it is. I understand people don't get into it, and we don't get into anything with not looking to fulfill that responsibility. But then when you have people coming forth and saying, I didn't know, and I didn't know that the city could do this for me, then it comes back to us, and then it becomes a big problem. And then we've got people coming here and they want to opt out, and they want us to pay for the bill for them to be able to opt out because they don't want to do it. And then I'm looking at PG&E, and in here, it states that, you know, it may not be better for us to have, it may not be a better rate. We might just want to stay with the PG&E. So for me personally, I can't speak for the other four, but for me personally, I need to do a little bit more work on this. I've read it, I've highlighted it, I've got a lot of questions. They've brought up some more questions for me that have made me think about this. I want to call, you know, on that renewable side for the PG&E side. I mean, I have a large house. My bill's only $200 a month. So I don't have a big bill, so this is not an option really for me, and I don't have solar. So, I mean, but there's still a lot of questions that I have unanswered before I think that I can make. If I was forced to take a vote tonight, I could tell you it would be no because I don't feel that I have enough information for me to make that determination this evening. So I'm just being totally honest. It's not that, it's not that it may be something, but if I were to make a motion, it would be to hold off until the next meeting so that we could meet with our council to find out any of these liabilities and to get a little bit more information for ourselves personally. So that would be my motion.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. One suggestion along those lines, if it's the intent of the council, you could bring this back and just table it all together if that's what a majority of you wants to do. And then, you know, do two more meetings on this. Another option, just for your consideration, would be to vote to introduce the ordinance, recognizing that you have to essentially approve the ordinance twice. So by introducing it, you would simply be introducing it, and you would have to take an affirmative vote, yea or nay, at your next meeting. And you could then hold off on adopting the resolution. And so that way, you at least can put yourself in a position at your next meeting to, if ultimately, all your questions are answered to your satisfaction, to approve everything. And that would be a way to not have to do this two more times. That's just a suggestion.
I'm okay with the will of the council, and neither one of those. Councilmember Ogerchak.
Then I'm going to try this. I'm going to make a motion to introduce, as council has said, the MCE Clean Energy and introduce an ordinance. Shall I read the whole thing in saying, just introduce, as you just said, or it says introduce in it? I apologize for stopping. It does say introduce, Derek.
Yes, let me, let me see if I can help you formulate a motion along those lines. What I would say is to introduce an ordinance authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program and approve, and continue the resolution approving the MCE joint powers agreement to the next meeting.
Ditto.
Motion by Councilmember Ogerchak. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Tiscorino. Open it up to discussion.
Yes. So with this motion as second, we still, moving forward, essentially, we still have those three options?
Yes. Yes, you can, if ultimately, yes, you have those three options still. Everything, all the cards are on the table.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Any other discussion? Not all call to a vote? So it passes, moving forward to a second reading, at which point we can accept or deny.
It will come for a second reading at your next meeting, and then the resolution has been continued. So you would reconsider the resolution at that meeting?
Very good. Moving on to...